Who's ready to tell Chris Hernan to fuck off? Yay! You can also do it with me live in person on Wednesday morning at 7:00 AM at Union Station in Denver while we protest the new racist, classist, elitist, ableist laws designed to keep the unhoused out of RTD spaces in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of winter. Fuck you, City Council. Fuck you, RTD. Except Chantel. Chantel Lewis, we love you. Anyway, here we go. Let's get pulled up.
Developers, I wonder, what does their PPM say, their private placement memorandum? Who are the investors? What are their returns? What is the timeline? Further, we could ask them about their last three to five projects. Do they still own them? If not, how quickly did they sell them? Who profited? And how many... Or we can look at the pattern...
Go Harmony!
...and help in making zoning decisions. I asked a developer, "Why do you pay the affordable housing fee instead of building affordable housing units?" I thought because he could make more per square foot. He said, "No." He said, "Most of the affordable housing programs are hard to comply with and have lots of hoops to jump through."
That's my girl, by the way.
He said he has tried and was told a certain number of units, came with plans, and then told that he needed to provide even more units. So he scrapped it and just paid the fee. He said, "Even more challenging than getting through the city was having to deal with the neighbors and their opposition to affordable housing and the misconception of what affordable housing is." I get flyers from these groups on my house. Plus, people want to preserve their property value. Now we've made it where it's hard for teachers, nurses, and single parents to be able to live here. A few weeks back, a councilperson mentioned flaws in AMI. As a number person, averages can be manipulated. Minimum wage needs to be a housing consideration. For many people making minimum wage, their employers only pay them less than 30 hours to avoid paying benefits. Housing is needed for people starting at minimum wage. Oh, my God, no. I will email you guys my little thing I was gonna hand or show you guys here. I don't have all the answers, but there was an interesting article in the Denver Post called "Don't Block Education Management." I will forward you the rest of the things I was gonna say, but leave you with a quote from SDR. "We must especially be aware of the small group of selfish men who would clip the wings of an American eagle in order to feather their own nests."
Woo!
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shannon Hoffman.
Hi, good evening. My name is Shannon Hoffman, and I live in District 10. It's my understanding that I am supposed to come to these meetings, to this body, with a statement on a particular bill I am passionate about. However, after tuning into the Good Governance meeting on Friday, and seeing that by Monday night, most decisions have already been made for voting, I'm confused about the purpose of public comment, which, from its title, seems like it should be a place where any of us in this community could come and speak on things that we are concerned about. And as you have all been elected not to work for, as Harmony just discussed, developers are those with the most money. My idea of good governance is to care for this community, to hear our needs, and to involve us in our... to involve us in your process. However, I am deeply concerned about community involvement as I begin to hear discussion about moving council meetings to 1:00 PM. I am deeply concerned about community involvement when I hear council members say our questions about bills should be heard at 10:00 AM committee meetings. Perhaps for some of us in the community, 10:00 AM is the middle of our workday. But perhaps for others, we are sleeping because of our nighttime jobs, maybe we are caregiving, maybe we are doing something of mutual aid that this city could provide on a mass scale but chooses not to.
Yeah!
Who knows why community doesn't show up at 10:00 AM committee meetings? But you know how you could find out? You could ask us. We're here now. We want to be involved, and the feeling that we get is that we are annoying and inconveniencing your process. When I, as an educator, have a student who hasn't shown up to school for weeks, I don't roll my eyes at them and say, "You're so behind. You won't even know how to do anything. You won't know how anything works." I smile and I say, "I am so happy you are here. How can I help you engage?"
How can I suck less?
We who are engaged are watching you. We are watching how you talk to and about us. We are watching how you vote. We are seeing you play small in the face of community problems like houselessness that require creativity and bravery. And if we can allow part of someone's compensation, like in Bill 20-1391 tonight, to go towards his housing at a park in Golden, why can't we think creatively like this for our unhoused neighbors? Dream big with us and allow community that's here to be a part of those freedom dreams. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Pryor.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Uh huh, go ahead.
Great. I would just like to take a moment and thank you, City Council, for all your hard work during these unprecedented times. I greatly appreciate that the majority of council has been working to find solutions to Denver's most pressing issues. I wanted to let you know that you are appreciated and to thank you for all that you do. It is a very big job and...
And you suck at it. It's clear how big the job is 'cause you... You suck at it.
Times are difficult and the pressures are great. Small vocal groups are shouting out the majority of Denverites who want common sense governance. I greatly appreciate the courage you have shown...
In ignoring...
...and hopefully will continue to show to stay the course of civility and good judgment
Oh, yeah!
...in the face of shouting and irrational requests. It is very difficult and exhausting when you are constantly barraged with misinformation and outright lies from people who should know better. What we see happening on the national level is also happening on the local level. Anger from both the far left and the far right...
Oh, fuck you!
...are making it very hard for you, an elected official...
Why don't you go stick your thumb in your own ass? You sorry, bootlicking piece of shit.
I know everyone truly wants to make them a better place.
My kids could do better than you with this shit. Suck their dicks in private. There's nothing wrong with sucking dick. God knows I love a dick. Just saying, this is not the time or the place. You can kiss their ass privately. That is not what public input is for. What bill are you fucking commenting on, you son of a bitch? Do some work before you leave your house! Oh, I'm sorry, your mother's basement. Not to shame you for living in your mother's basement. I know it's a pandemic, and I know you probably don't make minimum wage, but kissing their butts is not gonna have some of their power drip into your lap. That's not how it works!
You all are appreciated. Have a great evening.
What the fuck was that?
Thank you, Keith. Our next speaker up is...
Keith who?
And Vanita, you might have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Uh huh, we can, go ahead.
My name is Vanita Catherine Schenkenfelder Felden, District 2. Thank you, City Council members, and especially my councilperson, Kevin Flynn, for your service. My district neighbors, and I love our councilperson Flynn, the two white gals and all the ethnic volunteers who run the weekly 12-hour, high-quality food distribution bank at Christ the King Lutheran Church. Say hi to Councilperson Flynn.
Thank you so much, Vanita. We ask that you direct your comments to council as a whole.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
I became infected with COVID-19 November 2019. My medical massage therapist brought it back...
Medical massage therapist?
...from a visit to China. By the time testing became available in April 2020 for COVID-19, I was testing negative.
Did I hear that right? Medical massage therapist?
The first no-snot and antibody test. Since then, I have visited Denver...
50 bucks says she's white.
...every two to three weeks and continue to test negative. I have a dossier full of COVID negative, COVID-19 negative testing results. I repeat the test to make sure that at least I am not breeding COVID-19 on anyone. Yet it got into my body and started taking down tissue. I rebuilt my respiratory, digestive, optic, joint, and cardiovascular systems using alternative medicine and nutrition. I am 69 years old, autistic, and a holistic health practitioner with a 4.0 in pre-med studies for the healthcare bachelor's degree that I am earning at Metro. It is my fourth degree. I am healthier now than before COVID-19, doing 15 consecutive repetitions at a Rennie Shrine 373-step care case within three hours. It helped two small businesses in the Capitol Hill area...
What are you talking about?
...to keep their patrons safe and business open. No COVID-19 cases reported at either of those businesses. My reason for speaking today is to support our focus on rebuilding our Denver economy. Being autistic vaccine is not an option for me, so I am grateful I have the COVID-19...
What the fuck does Alzheimer have to do with a vaccine?
...on my terms. I am out there fighting respectfully for this city. Denver is a great place with a great attitude. Do not fear COVID-19. Just respect it in the way any adversary deserves respect. To quote Helen Keller, "I am only one, but still I am one. I cannot do everything..."
But still, you're a pain in the ass.
"...to do something. Because I cannot do everything, I will not refuse to do something that I can do. If the only thing that I can do is to make public comment to my city council, I do that."
And well, they're trying to take away your ability to do that.
Thank you for serving.
That had nothing to do with any bills!
Thank you, Vanita. Our next speaker up is Emily Perzicwos. I'll let you correct me if I mispronounce your last name, Emily. Go ahead.
I'm gonna lose my mind!
Yeah, it's Emily Perzicwos. I just wanted to respond to what I witnessed in the so-called committee meeting on Friday. First off, I was shocked that the...
Back to humans.
...influence, conflict of interest, transparency, or power...
I don't know.
...were not referenced once in the 2.5-hour session. I don't know how you can talk about good government, discussing the basics of what threatens it. You know, I didn't feel like this meeting was about good governance, but in fact, it was about power and control specifically over one dissenting member of the city council,
Yeah!
Councilwoman Candy Cedeva-Baca.
Fuck yeah, man!
I would like to show my solidarity and support for Councilwoman Cedeva-Baca.
Direct your comments to council as a whole. If you could...
This is to council as a whole.
...direct your comments to council as a whole and not call out any one member.
What was treating Candy Cedeva-Baca was un... Um, I was...
I'm gonna lose it.
...struck by the irony and the hypocrisy that...
Who?
...by various members of the committee as they were trying to... And it was in the middle of a good governance meeting, so it doesn't really make any sense. I also wanted to make a direct clarification about the meeting over the summer that was interrupted by protesters. That was a nonviolent civil disobedience. It didn't result in any deaths, injuries to the police or council members. It's not appropriate. It's false equivalency, and it's misinformation to compare what happened to the violent riot that occurred at the U.S. Capitol and left five people dead. On the issue of homelessness, I feel that the city council has plenty of information to understand that issue, and I found it to be a great deal of privilege that the city council members were complaining to the point of tears of the privilege of even having a house. Your unhoused constituents are living 24/7 with a lack of privacy. They have police menacing them, and they're intense on a weekly basis for the crime of trying to survive. And I think that, you know, there's a lot of self-pity and fear-mongering that was going on in that meeting, and the city council should be evolving to meet the current demands of what's going on specifically about homelessness. I just find it to be so disrespectful that you can sit there crying about having people a day because police are showing up to houseless people every week with guns, intimidated privacy. So stop the self-pity and start solving the problems.
That's a lot of time. Next up, we have Lucy James is our next speaker. Go ahead, Lucy. You might have to unmute yourself.
Good evening, council. Thanks for hearing me speak. My name is Lucy James, and I live in District 10. And I want to talk about things I've been talking about before with you, and one big concern of mine is how the homeless population is aging. So I've been talking a lot to a friend who's worked for decades with homeless folk, and he says that almost 45% of homeless people become homeless after the age of 50. And moreover, they quickly develop the same terrible health conditions as people 20 years their senior. And almost weekly, he's telling me of their deaths, most of which would simply not have happened if they'd been in safe outdoor spaces at the least. So there's been recently a lot of welcome visibility in our local press around this crisis, and you probably know this. So legendary hip-hop artists in our city are moving hearts and minds. And as Thea Wilson put it in an excellent piece in the Colorado Sun, "The single message to the mayor is a scathing, lyrically rich, socially conscious anthem," calling out Mayor Hancock for this city's treatment of humans experiencing homelessness. And this has got the mayor's attention, apparently, but given that he's kicking back, he still needs you guys to hold him accountable. It's kind of up to you, and you kind of have to want that yourselves first. I kind of think you must want it, because I don't believe any of you still thinks that the sweeps are a good idea.
We gotta tell the mayor he's doing bad things.
I can't believe he do. So I want to make the exact same reasonable demands I've made before, which is to stop sweeps, create safe outdoor spaces...
I love you.
...and provide sanitation, because diseases and pests are best prevented by providing safe outdoor spaces, bathrooms, hand-washing stations, and trash receptacles rather than displacing people from block to block until eventually they die. You have the data provided by From Allies to Abolitionists to back up all these demands. You're not asking for the moon. Of course, our leadership, you, also needs to address the root problems of systemic inequality and poverty. But for people to thrive, they first need to survive. Some progress has been made in court. It's now obligatory to at least let our unhoused neighbors know that they're about to be trashed, but Hancock, he can push back on this. And but this was soundly refuted in another op-ed in Westwood, which I hope you've had a chance to see, to quote, "These traumatic displacements cyclically destabilize individuals and street communities, cutting people off from desperately needed services," and so on. I'm running out of time. But not to mention that if you add this all up, it's wasting millions of taxpayers' dollars. So please to say Hancock has been a disappointment would be an understatement. Please hold him accountable.
Our next speaker is Tanya Cohen.
Tanya Cohen, District 3. First of all, I'd like to say that I am appalled that the city council would even propose moving public comment and votes to 1:00 PM. This is an obvious attempt to further censor your particularly poor and working-class constituents who rarely have the luxury nor the freedom, as they are usually working one to three jobs during the day and most likely do not work in front of a computer and would not have the freedom to take a break to do public comment at this time, unlike your constituents with money, who probably work for themselves from home, in front of a computer, have the time and luxury, unless are probably more vocal. You were not elected to only represent this minority, and we know that those with money in Denver, the same ones Mayor Hancock caters to, are the minority. I was born in Denver. Denver's history is working class, and despite all the gentrification, Denver's historic communities, which still represent the majority, are still vastly working-class and working poor. You represent everyone, not just all your moneyed, elitist, entitled, corporate donors who always expect to get their way. None of us really saw the way money and people were going to flood into Denver. It's been disgusting to watch over the years city officials run to lick the boots of the rich who have moved here instead of those from the communities most of us came from. This week, I went to see how the gentrified part of Five Points, now called Rhino, is doing. I saw endless, huge, plastic tents, cabanas, bubbles, wooden roofs, all kinds of shelters from Lammers Square all the way north. In the middle of the street, people were eating, and the city had bent over backwards, putting up cones and signs to close the streets off to make people with houses and with money more comfortable. They were not being swept for being in the middle of the street in these shelters. There were not hordes of cops surrounding them, brutally demanding they leave, throwing their personal belongings in the trash. Why? What hypocrisy? So if you are literally just trying to survive, we will kick you when you're down. But if you already have a house and money and can pay for an overpriced meal in Rhino, we will bend over backwards catering to your every need and desire. Are you all just too far gone to suddenly start to have a conscience?
Yes.
Compassion?
There are.
Or are you capable of change? Are you capable of turning the tables, to say no to traumatically displacing our most vulnerable, and to do everything in your power now to house all of our houseless neighbors tonight and every night going forward?
Read them for Phil. Fuck, yeah!
Who do you want to be? What legacy do you want to leave?
Tanya Cohen's the baddest, but you know what? She learned from the best, and that best is you, Shannon Hoffman.
That concludes our general public comment session tonight.
All these comments were fire!
In these times of social change, it's important that members of the public have more opportunities to be heard by leaders at all levels of government. The next general public comment session will be held before the meeting of council on Monday, February 8th. Sign-up begins at 12:00 noon on Friday, February 5th.
That was fire! Gilmore's trash! Proud of all of you! That was amazing!
...on this meeting to attend the regular session of Denver City Council, which will begin momentarily after a quick break. Please stay with us.
Not going anywhere. Hi, Happy United City Council Day! And I don't know if you heard all of that. If you want to get in with some of these amazing people who are uniting with me to make these public comments, giving me something to livestream, they're called From Allies to Abolitionists. We are called From Allies to Abolitionists, rather. Part of the Emancipation Theater. We can be found on Facebook. Reach out to me directly if you're interested in joining. We do a lot of research and a lot of work getting ready to push the levers of power everywhere we can possibly reach simultaneously. We are making a push to ensure that there are more safe outdoor spaces opened in Denver and that the city is actually doing something, something, anything would be nice at this point about the unhoused crisis and the crisis of humans who are unhoused right now during the pandemic about which they've done fucking nothing.
Welcome to the City Council meeting of Monday, February 1st, 2021.
Now, we get to sit with the thumb of our rear ends while they make this racist comments. I'm not doing the pledge allegiance. Fuck that. My kids aren't allowed to do it either. They know this. I feel like my kids get to City Council a lot.
Council members, please continue to mute your mics and join Councilmember Clark as he leads us in the Denver City Council land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Madam President. The council honors and acknowledges that the land on which we reside...
You are an asshole! The land that you rape and steal and sell, you developer whore! I hate you, Joel and Clark, with the fire of a thousand suns! Sorry, I love you, but I'm telling the mayor, fuck off! Give me a few more minutes, sweetie. Oh, you're sorry. I thought it was babies. Okay. You can come in. That's our councilperson. He's a jackass and a developer. He's the worst. His name is Joel and Clark. Fuck you, Joel and Clark!
...exclusions and erasures of indigenous peoples. May this acknowledgement...
You don't give a shit about indigenous peoples!
...of legacies of oppression and inequities, and recognize the current and future contributions of indigenous communities in Denver.
We, as indigenous people, have already been waiting 400-plus years for the settler nation to get it right. There are...
Black? Here. Cedeva-Baca? Here. Clark?
Let's talk about the inauguration. Did you see the beautiful and moving land acknowledgement that opened the ceremony? Did it make you cry the way Amanda Gorman's call for unity did? Did it give you hope? No, it didn't, because there wasn't one. You would think in whatever focus group or marketing pros it was that got together to make sure and script that pageant to cover all the feel-good liberal bullshit about fixing something that's been broken since boots first set foot on this continent. There would have been at least one of them with the awareness to suggest, "Hey, maybe we should throw a vote against Indians." You'd think they could have found a citizen of the Katchataka people to say some words. The area of Washington, D.C., was only a thriving hub of indigenous life before settlers killed them all after all. But no. It's just as likely as a deliberate snub, because even today, I'm certain the federal government would prefer Indians simply go away, and would rather not bring us up. We are going nowhere. This underscores why I think land acknowledgements are bullshit, and as I've said before, the liberals' version of thoughts and prayers. They're meaningless because they don't do anything but show that Indians, what used to be ours, but isn't anymore, and nothing is going to be done to change it. And the next time I see some asshat on social media post a pic of themselves recreating out, recreating out in some beautiful spot, saying, "I just want to recognize that this is the ancestral lands of the blah, blah, blah," my head will probably explode, because the rightful owners of that land, if they still exist, will probably move hundreds of miles away and don't have the means or opportunity to be where you are, and probably for a generation or three, risk death if they did in fact try to return. It makes me crazy. Every inch of this American land is stolen land. Every single inch.
...of young people in Denver for many, many years. He died at 91 a couple of weeks ago. He lived in the Hampton Heights neighborhood in my district for over 53 years, and his wife still lives there.
I'm already sick of all the white liberal people humping each other's legs every time Biden does something that is simply his damn job. It's so nice to have a president that there is copious lingering accountability to be addressed, and Joe goddamn Biden is neck-deep in it. We are not going back to anything that resembles the last 40 years of this political career. Our only way is forward. Indians are far more than that something else. No one is going to sweep us aside. I urge everyone, all of us trying to survive this current awful nightmare, to consider what it takes to be a good ancestor to our families and everything that we do, to be good relatives to each other. I'm angry and old and tired and frustrated, and I am going to do my best. That is from a weekly email called "An Irritable Metis," written by Chris Latre. I'm gonna put a link to his Substack in here. You need to read this. Fuck land acknowledgements without action to back them up, and fuck your thoughts and prayers. Some of y'all can't even think.
...volunteers. You can reach out to my council office, and we can send you the contact form.
Damn right, Robert Gels.
Email districtone@denvergov.org, or you can call 720-337-7701. And just to be clear, that's all the neighborhoods east of federal in Council District 1. And then I would just also like to give a shout out to the collaboration I did with Councilwoman Torres, Representative Gonzalez Gutierrez, state rep Julie Gonzalez, and our DPS board member Angela Cobian. We meet weekly, and we noticed the discrepancy in vaccines in the Latino community, and together, the five of us got together and hosted a vaccine clinic at Servicios de la Raza in Council District 3. They were posted as where we served over 600 people who got vaccinated, and we're working on another one this weekend. So it took a whole team of us to get this done, and I just want to say, it was heartfelt. I saw people in my community who were not being able to get access to the vaccine. I know we all have received messages on Facebook and other social media outlets thanking us, and we're not doing it to be thanked. We're doing it because we saw the need in the community, and so we acted. So thank you for your partnership. That's it, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sandoval. Councilwoman Cedeva-Baca?
Thank you. I would just like to announce that in District 9, we are partnering with SCL and RTD Board Member Chantel Lewis to get people out in this first targeted group, the 70-year-olds plus, to National Western for a testing event on Saturday...
Thank you.
...from 8:00 to noon. So if you know somebody who is eligible, who needs some help signing up, there's an online form that they have to fill out, they can call our office. We can help them out with that. Start by sending us an email at districtnine@denvergov or calling our 720-333-777709 number, and we can help you guys get the form filled out. We need as many of you who are eligible to turn out so that we can continue justifying more events in the neighborhood. So help somebody out and let people you know who are 70-year-olds, 70 or older, so they can get vaccinated. Thank you.
So the words that I was screaming just now were not actually my own. They belong to Chris Latre, and you really need to subscribe to his newsletter and follow him on Twitter.
I have a proclamation on tonight's calendar that I'm not gonna read, but I just wanted to acknowledge Jeff Dorsner, who is being recognized in the proclamation, who served for 20 years for the U.S. Attorney's Office. He served under four different presidents and nine different assistant U.S. Attorneys. He... His adult life was focused on serving the public. He also worked for U.S. Congresswoman Patricia Schroder, and then he was my council aide for a period of time as well. And so I just... And so I just wanted to acknowledge him. I also wanted to ask Councilwoman Black to please extend to Dr. Matz's widow, my condolences. His son is my knee doctor. And I didn't realize his dad had passed, so I appreciate you filing this so that I can extend those to him directly, but appreciate you bringing that forward as well. And so that's it. Just wanted to acknowledge those two individuals and I know you're going to read the other one. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Ortega. And seeing no other hands raised, I'll go ahead with my announcement for District 11. We are also taking part in the SCL Health Vaccination Drive at National Western. And so District 11 residents in Montbello, Parkfield, High Point, and Green Valley Ranch, you are also eligible to participate in that vaccination clinic. And it's going to run from 8 until noon on Saturday, February 6th. And if you would just reach out directly to the District 11 Council Office via Facebook or email or give us a call and we will make sure that we set up your transportation and get you registered so that you can participate in that vaccination clinic. All right, there are no presentations tonight. There are no communications. There is one proclamation being read this evening. Councilmember Black, will you please read Proclamation 21-0114?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Madam President. Whereas the City and County of Denver and the Department of Transportation Infrastructure has been privileged to have the leadership and dedication of our first female city engineer, Leslie Thomas, who was also known as the agency's Deputy Manager and CEO of Problem Solving for more than 30 years. And whereas Leslie Thomas has been a dedicated steward of the city's vertical and horizontal infrastructure, including planning, design, and building. And
Truth.
Whereas Leslie Thomas has celebrated the completion of dozens of critical infrastructure projects that have worked to improve travel safety and reliability, increase mobility, reduce flood risks, and make Denver more sustainable and resilient. And whereas Leslie Thomas has been dedicated to her family, coworkers, community, and citizens to the point that they all wish that they could clone another LT. And whereas some of the highlights of Leslie Thomas's career include the 2008 National Democratic Convention, Justice Center Complex, completion of the Better Denver Bond Program, 39th Avenue-Greenway,
I'm going to check on my dinner in the oven. Y'all be right back.
...Landing Project, 47th and York, Sanderson Gulch, Peoria Street Crossing, Convention Center, National Western Center, Brighton Boulevard. And whereas Leslie Thomas has collaborated with CDOT on major projects such as T-Rex and Central 70. And whereas Leslie Thomas has collaborated with RTD on major projects such as the West Line, G Line, A Line, and North Metro. Whereas Leslie Thomas has been a pioneer for women in the infrastructure industry, created a path for women leaders. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Council of the City and County of Denver, Section 1, that the Council of the City and County of Denver hereby recognizes and honors Leslie B. Thomas for her over 30 years of outstanding service to the citizens of Denver, her coworkers, and her community. Section 2, that the clerk of the City and County of Denver shall fix the seal of the City and County of Denver to this proclamation and that a copy be transmitted to Leslie Thomas.
Thank you, Councilmember Black. Your motion to adopt?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to adopt. I'm sorry, I don't have the number in front of me. Look, please. I move to adopt Proclamation 20-0114.
We're in the circle, Jared, portion of the meeting. It'll be over soon.
Councilman Herndon for the second. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Black?
Well, I have just a few choice words for Leslie Thomas. She is my idol. I think she's an idol for a lot of women. She is pragmatic. She's a problem solver. She is incredibly well-respected. She's a mother, a daughter, a wife, an engineer, and just a total badass. And I am going to miss her. I hope that she's going to have some fun when she's done. I know we've all worked with her and I have just come to her with problems I could not resolve and she brought people together and she found some pragmatic
Hey, did I miss it? Did City Council acknowledge Black History Month yet?
She has been breaking the glass ceiling for three decades. And for our city to have a first woman city engineer and all of the other great positions she had is something that we should all be proud of. Thank you.
What you need, you want to be proud of something? Let's be proud of Black History. Black History Month.
No other hands raised to make comments. Just want to congratulate Leslie on her retirement and that there were so many projects in District 11 and I know throughout the city that we would have never gotten done and accomplished without her great leadership and advocacy for our neighborhoods. And so happy to recognize her tonight. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
I mean, I know Candy knows it's Black History Month. I just don't think anybody else in there does.
Aye. Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kinich?
Aye.
Ortega?
All right, that was cute.
That was not my dog. Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
13 ayes?
13 ayes. Proclamation 21-0114 has been adopted.
Not yet. We've adopted. We haven't acknowledged Black History Month.
Acceptance. Councilmember Black, we'll go ahead and start the timer if you'd like to bring up who will accept the proclamation. And I know you've got a couple folks here.
Well, first, Ulyss Cluckley, our Executive Director for the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure is going to say a few words and then Leslie will accept the proclamation. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you very much, Councilwoman Black. It's truly an honor and a pleasure to speak on behalf of Dottie about Madam City Engineer Leslie Thomas and now a new title. She is the former CEO of Problem Solving. And I think that is the best description of Ms. Thomas. I've had the pleasure to work with her for the past three years and I can tell you that she is
But have you met Chantel Lewis?
Most thoughtful and most bold leaders that I've been a part of in my career.
But have you met Chantel Lewis?
All of her work that she's done over the past three decades as she was the city engineer for Public Works and now transitioning to the city engineer and deputy manager for Dottie. So she's really been influential in building out the next 100 years of the city. And I'm truly grateful of the opportunity that I've worked closely with her over the past three years. As a point of note, I mean, she has really inspired others within the department and specifically inspired the way in which leaders are supposed to conduct themselves in an environment where they're dealing with people that may not look like them. And if you're not aware that the transportation industry and the construction industry is a pretty male-dominated industry, and she was able to speak up for herself, speak on behalf of the city, and really deliver fantastic and outstanding projects. So I'm very proud of you, Leslie. Congratulations on your illustrious career and I'm wishing you all the best of luck in your new endeavors. So congratulations. And I'll turn it over to you, Leslie.
Thank you, Ulyss. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. I'm not seeing your video yet.
Well, I will just start. How about that? Thank you, Councilwomen Black. Thank you, City Council, and thank you so much, Ulyss, for the kind words. It has truly been my honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Denver with all of you for the last 30 years. I've seen a lot of change. When I first started Lodo and was stopped at Blake Street, now it kind of all begins there. I remember the blizzard of 2006 and 2007 where we all shoveled snow and the pavement came up with the snow, with so many, so many different ways of service. But we couldn't do it without the leadership of the City Council, the leadership of the mayor, and of course, our Denver voters who have voted in so many bond issues and supported so many projects to improve the quality of life here in Denver. So I really, truly appreciate this proclamation and this honor. And it's really been my honor to lead as a woman in this construction space and be an infrastructure advocate and show the way forward. I really appreciate those who have come before me and who gave me this opportunity. Stephanie Foote, who used to be a City Council Member and a Chief of Staff, served as their honor. And she actually hired me as the city engineer. So kudos to her and so proud of what we've all accomplished. So I will leave you with, wherever you are, however you serve, make sure your voice is heard. It's important to hear everyone and what they have to say because it makes all of us, takes all of us to make this city great. So thank you so much. Appreciate it and hope to see you around town. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Leslie, for all of your amazing work and Ulyss for joining us for comments and Councilwoman Black for bringing this important proclamation forward. So enjoy that retirement, Leslie, and I do hope we get to see you around town.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you both. Next up, and just a reminder, Proclamations 115 and 116 have been placed on consent. Madam Secretary, would you please read the bills for an deduction for us?
From Finance and Governance, 2139, a bill for an ordinance making a rescission from and in appropriation in the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Special Revenue Fund, transferring cash to the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Capital Improvement Fund, and authorizing an appropriation in the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Capital Improvement Fund.
People are dying on their streets, but we're celebrating retirements.
2115, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification for 1570, 1580, 1586,
Zoning classifications
1596, West Wayod Avenue
For developments to profit off of stolen land.
A bill for an ordinance changing
That will not help the most vulnerable amongst us in
And 2138, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed contract between the City and County of Denver and Colorado Department of Transportation to perform all maintenance services for certain state highway system locations within the city's local jurisdiction.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Councilmembers, this is your last opportunity to call out an item. Councilmember Clark, will you make the motions for us this evening?
Happy to, Council President.
I'm sorry, Anna, it hurts.
I'll do a recap here. Under resolutions, no items have been called out. Under bills for introduction, no items have been called out. Under bills for final consideration, no items have been called out. And under pending, no items have been called out. That concludes the items to be called out. All bills for introduction are ordered published. Councilmembers, remember, this is a consent or a block vote and you will need to vote aye. Otherwise, this is your last chance to call out an item for a separate vote. Councilmember Clark, will you please put the proclamations and resolutions for adoption and the bills on final consideration for passage, for final passage on the floor?
Yes, Council President, I move that proclamations and resolutions be adopted and bills on final consideration be placed upon final consideration and do pass in a block for the following items. 115, 116, 28, 30, 31, 32, 45, 1391, 1474, 1475, 1476, 16, 34, 35, 36, 42, 43, 40, and 18.
Thank you. It has been moved by Councilman Clark. We have the second by Councilman Herndon. Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Black?
Aye.
Cedebacka?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kinich?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
13 ayes?
13 ayes. The proclamations and resolutions have been adopted and the bills have been placed upon final consideration and do pass. Our pre-recess announcement, tonight there will be a required public hearing on Council Bill 20-1457, changing the zoning classification for 4680 North Quitman Street, a required public hearing on Council Bill 20-1471, changing the zoning classification for 3217 East Yale Way, and a required public hearing on Council Bill 20-1477,
You know, because why would we talk about the people dying outside the building?
44 North Hope Street. Anyone wishing to speak on any of these matters must go online to sign up during the recess of council. If there are no objections from members of council, we will take a 10-minute recess. Councilmembers, please remember to turn off your cameras and mute your microphones and we will return by 6:04 PM. Thank you.
Yeah, the way they talk about and treat Candy is representative of the way they talk about and treat the most vulnerable people in our community. It's really sickening. So while we have a few minutes, I love Chris Latre's writing. I really, really do. It is worth reading this in full while not screaming. I'm going to try. "The other day I posted a Twitter link to this Guardian piece, Biden Killed the Keystone Pipeline by Nick Estes. A friend of mine who also shared it summed it up perfectly in saying, 'The thing I mostly took away from this article was that it's been relentless pressure from Indigenous communities that's actually made a difference.'" Estes, the author, is a citizen of the Lower Brulso Tribe and an Assistant Professor of American Studies at the University of New Mexico. He is the author of Our History is the Future, which is brilliant. He's also a co-founder of the Red Nation and frankly, a dude I refuse to die without having spent time with. The man knows his stuff. Some other Twitter person responded to Claire's post, taking her and Estes to task for already being on Joe Biden's case after, after all, he's only been in office a little over a week, which is fair, I suppose, depending on your perspective. Except we Indigenous people have already been waiting 400-plus years for this settler nation to get it right. My rage spiked and I almost weighed in on the exchange, but I took a deep breath and walked away, which brings me pause. There are enough new subscribers to this newsletter that maybe I better define where I'm coming from. I started the newsletter thinking it would mostly be a companion piece to the book I'm working on about the Little Shell Tribe of Chipewa Indians with whom I am enrolled. And it remains that, sort of. There's some stuff from the book in these pieces and some from here will likely show up in the book. I don't know. Most important is that, being immersed in the story of my people and federal Indian policy specifically for about the last 156 years and beyond, I've become pretty radicalized in ways I never really considered before, which means there isn't a single thing that happens in the United States that I don't view through a lens of colonization, through the lens of the surviving people who are under the onslaught of the continued attempt at genocide. It is a genocide that exists in blood quantum requirements, encroachment on Indian lands for pipelines, fishing access rights, everything. And it is a wide lens because it includes colonial efforts ongoing around the world that get little play in American media. Why would it when it's a mirror image to how things have always been right here? As an example, let's talk about the inauguration again. Did you see the beautiful and moving land acknowledgement that opened the ceremony? Did it make you cry the way Amanda Gorman's call for unity echoed Biden's ongoing rhetoric? Did it give you hope? No, it didn't because there wasn't one. You would think in whatever focus group of marketing pros it was that got together to make sure and script that pageant to cover up all the feel-good liberal bullshit about fixing something. to cover up all the feel-good liberal bullshit about fixing something that's been broken since boots first set foot on this continent, there would have been at least one of them with the awareness to suggest, hey, maybe we should throw a bone to the Indians. You'd think they could have found a citizen of the Nettich Chunk people to say some words. The area of Washington, D.C. was only a thriving hub of indigenous life before settlers killed them all after all. But no. It's just as likely that it was a deliberate snub because even today, I'm certain the federal government would prefer Indians simply go away and would rather not bring us up. We aren't going away, which underscores why I think land acknowledgements are bullshit and, as I've said before, the liberals' version of thoughts and prayers. They're meaningless because they don't do anything but show Indians what used to be ours but isn't anymore and nothing is going to be done to change it. And the next time I see some asshat on social media post a pic of themselves recreating out in some beautiful spot saying, "I just want to recognize that this is the ancestral lands of the blah, blah, blah," my head will probably explode because the rightful owners of that land, if they still exist, are probably moved hundreds of miles away and don't have the means or opportunity to be where you are and probably for a generation or three, risk death if they did try and return. It makes me crazy. Every inch of this American land is stolen land. Every inch. I'm doing my best to relax, give this new administration time to get their feet under them. They have a huge mess to clean up. But I'm already getting frustrated in how they are letting members of both the House and the Senate get away with sedition when if my people had swarmed those steps, it would have been a bloodbath. Imagine an Indian guy just going around the metal detectors they've installed at the Capitol. Bloodbath. I'm already sick of all the white liberal people humping each other's legs every time Biden does something that is simply his damn job. It's so nice to have a president that bleh, puke. There is copious lingering accountability to be addressed and Joe goddamn Biden is nicked deep in it. We are not going back to anything that resembles the last forty years of his political career. Our only way is forward. Indians are far more than that something else. No one is going to sweep us aside. I urge everyone, all of us trying to survive this current awful nightmare, to consider what it takes to be a good ancestor to our families in everything that we do, to be good relatives to each other. I'm angry and old and tired and frustrated and I'm going to do my best. That's from Chris Latre. His weekly email newsletter, well, weekly CPT. It's called An Irritable Metis. I highly recommend subscribing. It's at chrislatre.com. Also, I just posted the link. It's in the comments. You can also follow him on Twitter, at Chris, C-H-R-A-S-L-A-T-R-A-Y. He's amazing. His work is fantastic. Council should be back in a few minutes. Thank you for being here. Thank you for engaging. Thank you for hanging out. I got better things to do too, y'all, I promise. You saw that little bitty thing come running in here and say, "Hi, mommy," inside of my lap. God, I love her. She's so cute. I hate missing a second of my kids' precious little lives, but it's worth it because this work will make their life better. It will make all of our lives better. I strongly, firmly believe that. Otherwise, I'd be down there cuddling them right now, ensconced in my privilege, tuning everything out, telling myself I was doing so in the name of self-preservation the way I started doing when Trump became president in two thousand and sixteen and I stopped reading the news completely. You're welcome. I'm glad you enjoyed it. His words mimic my own. He is a member of a tribe to, I will never be able to prove claim to mine. That's because of the blood quantum rules and the fact that that's what genocide's for. It's eradicating a people. It's eradicating a claim. I can engage. I can read. I can name my children after the battles where the most white people were murdered. I'm proud of that. Not a lot of people catch on to that. It makes me really happy. But it'll never be mine and it'll never be theirs. And it's not a sentiment that I can pass on. So the reason this country has gotten away with that is because so many people said, "Well, that's not my problem. I don't want to get involved. I don't want to get in it, so I'm going to pretend it isn't happening." And that's why we've gotten here. It's how we might have gotten through the last four years, but it's not how we got out of them. And it's not going to be what we need to do going forward. Like Chris said so eloquently, the future is not going to imitate the previous forty years of Joe Biden's political career. And thank God for it. It's going to make room for the candidacy debacles, for the yous, for the me's, for the allies to abolitionists, for the Chris Latrees. And hopefully, it'll get us something closer to living to the creed this nation puts forth. I love this country and I reserve the right to criticize the hell out of her every single day.
We have three public hearings tonight. Speakers should begin their remarks by telling the council their names and cities of residence and if they feel comfortable doing so, their home addresses. When called upon, please wait until our meeting host promotes you to speaker. When you are promoted, your screen will flash and say, "Reconnecting to meeting." Please do not leave the meeting. You will be reconnected and will need to turn on your camera, if you have one, and your microphone. If you have signed up to answer questions only, state your name and note you are available for questions of council. Speakers will have three minutes. There is no yielding of time. You will see your time flash on the screen when you have thirty seconds left. Speakers must stay on the topic of the hearing and must direct their comments to the council members as a whole. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech. Direct your comments to council and please refrain from individual or personal attacks. Councilmember Clark, will you please put-
But butt kissing shall take.
Fifty-seven on the floor for passage.
Sorry, Madam President. I move the Council Bill twenty dash fourteen fifty-seven be placed upon final consideration and do pass. Thank you.
Thank you. It has been moved and we've got the second from Councilman Herndon. The required public hearing for Council Bill twenty dash fourteen fifty-seven is open. May we please have the staff report? And I see we've got Fran here, so go ahead.
Good afternoon, members of city council. Can you see my screen there?
We can't see your screen yet. We still have your video up.
Oh, let me see. Forgot to push the button. Can you see it there?
Mm-hmm. Good to go, Fran. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Fran Penney-Fill and I'm a city, an associate city planner with Planning Services. And I'm here today to present you an overview of the map amendment for forty-six eighty Quitman Street. The subject property is located in District One with Amanda Sandoval in the Berkeley neighborhood. The request is to allow for an ADU and all other form and new standards remain the same. Property is currently in the urban single unit C-zone district, which allows for a minimum zone lot of five thousand five hundred square feet. And as you can see on the map, most of the surrounding properties are also zoned U-S-U-C. Side is currently occupied by a single unit home and it is surrounded by mostly other single unit uses as well as quasi-public uses, including a school one block to the west. This light here shows the existing context with the side of the proposed rezoning on the top left. And the rest of the photos are just to show you the surrounding neighborhood and show the residential character of the area. Speaking of the process, informational notice of the application was sent on November sixth, two thousand and twenty. Planning Board recommended approval on December second. And of present, only one letter of support has been received from the Berkeley-Ridgey's United Neighborhood R and L. The Denver zoning code has five review criteria, which I will go over. The first criteria is consistency with adopted plans. There are two plans applicable to this rezoning. The first one is Comprehensive Plan two thousand and forty and the second one is Blueprint Denver. The rezoning is consistent with several of the strategies in Comprehensive Plan two thousand and forty, but I'll go only over a couple of them. So the map amendment will promote equity by creating a greater mix of housing options in every neighborhood and it will lead to an environmentally resilient Denver by promoting midfield development where infrastructure and services are already in place. Looking at Blueprint Denver, the subject property is mapped as part of the urban neighborhood context. The future places map designates the subject property as low residential place type. These place types have predominantly single and two-unit uses and accessory dwelling units are appropriate. Quitman Street is designated as a local street, which is mostly characterized by residential uses. Growth area in Blueprint Denver is all other areas of the city. These areas are anticipated to see ten percent employment growth and twenty percent housing growth by two thousand and forty. Blueprint also includes specific policy recommendations. Housing Policy Number Four focuses on diversifying housing choice through the expansion of accessory dwelling units throughout all residential areas. Staff also finds that the requested zoning meets the next criteria. The rezoning will result in uniformity of district regulations and will further the public health, safety, and welfare primarily through its implementation of adopted plans. The justifying circumstance for this rezoning is a city adopted plan. Since the approval of the existing U-S-U-C zone district, the city has adopted the Comprehensive Plan two thousand and forty and Blueprint Denver. Stated throughout this presentation, the proposed rezoning meets the intent of these plans. Lastly, the proposed zoning is consistent with the urban neighborhood context, residential districts, and the U-S-U-C one zone district. Staff thus recommend approval based on finding all review criteria has been met.
All right. Thank you for the presentation, Fran. Council has not received any written testimony on Council Bill twenty dash fourteen fifty-seven. We have three individuals signed up to speak this evening and we will start out with our first speaker and it's Jesse Paris.
Yay, Jesse Paris. We all need to be Jesse Paris, showing up like honey badgers.
Good evening, members of council. Can I be heard?
Mm-hmm. Go ahead, Jesse.
My name is Jesse Michelle Paris. I'm representing for Denver Home and Style Allow, Black Stars Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Committee for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, Mile High Knows, and from Allies to Allessness. And I will be the next mayor of Denver in two thousand and twenty-three. I'm in favor of this rezoning tonight. It meets all the criteria, so honestly, there's nothing I can tell you that's going to change your mind on this rezoning. Good job, Amanda Sandoval. You got this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jesse. Our second speaker is David Hagan. And David, you might have to unmute.
Sorry about that. I was having some difficulty with my computer. Yeah, so I just want to thank you for letting me speak. I'm going to just, I was thinking about, just want to read this little thing about a priest that we should take into consideration when we do rezonings and other things that we do. Disguised as a homeless person, a pastor mingled with his congregation outside the church. The churchgoers waited eagerly for the new pastor, who was going to introduce himself that morning, but they didn't expect him to be dressed the way he was. For thirty minutes, he walked around outside, mingled among them while the church was filling up with people. Only one person said hello to him. He asked for money. He asked for change to buy food, but not one person offered him any. He went into the sanctuary to sit down, but was asked by an usher to move to the back. He greeted people and was greeted back with stares and dirty looks, people looking down at him and judging him. Sitting at the back of the church, he listened to the announcements. The elder announced the arrival of the new pastor, clapping, everyone looked around with joy and anticipation. To their surprise, the homeless man stood up and started walking towards the altar. The clapping stopped. All eyes were on the homeless man. When he reached the altar, he took a moment and he looked around and he shared, or he shared what he experienced that morning. He then said, "I hope you all go home and reflect on what happened here this morning and examine your hearts. See you all next Sunday." Many bowed in shame. Many began to weep and many looked at each other feeling terrible about themselves. It doesn't matter how many Sundays you show up for church. It doesn't matter what you do in city council. It matters what you do, or it matters what you do in city council, not what you say you're going to do. And I'm sorry, I screwed that part up. But it matters what you do. And the story goes, the people felt ashamed because they weren't doing what they should do. So please do what you're supposed to do.
All right. Thank you, David. Our last speaker is Tess Doherty.
Hi there.
Go ahead, Tess.
I was just listening about the rezoning and I used to live in Berkeley. I love that neighborhood. And I, there have been a lot of effects of gentrification to Berkeley. And I think that certain parts of the city have not felt the impact of homelessness as District Nine has. And so I just would ask that when we're, you know, thinking about neighborhoods that have also undergone gentrification, like Five Points, which is what it should be called, not Rhino. And, and, you know, Berkeley is one of them. Sunnyside is one of them. And I just would ask that we consider, you know, the, the circumstances of other districts when we're rezoning and thinking about safe outdoor spaces, that we're going to need more of them. I read a study the other day that it's expected that nationwide, I think something like, it's going to increase by like sixty-two percent, maybe, people living on the streets. So this isn't something that's going to go away and sweeping them isn't going to be a solution. So just as we consider these rezonings every week, I hope that we can also be thinking, you know, in the future of what we're going to need to anticipate to provide. And, and, and also consider that just because it's not happening in your district and, and as the speaker, someone from Public Comment said, as he tried to represent the rest of all of Denver, you know, acting as if I would probably have fallen in the category that he would, that he was saying was a small minority. But I don't think that some neighborhoods are feeling the impact and have the same pressure and have the same, you know, difficulties and challenges that, that some, that other districts do. So I just would ask that we think about that when we are moving forward and that we're making decisions with compassion and thinking about some of the challenges that other parts of the city have that your district might, may not have. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tess. That concludes our speakers this evening for this hearing. Questions from members of council? Councilman Flynn.
Thank you, Madam President. Fran, the aerials might be out of date, but when I, because I didn't get a chance to go up and actually view this during the last week or so. But it looks from the online Google satellite view that there already are two structures in the back of this property. And I didn't see anything in the staff report that remarked on that. There's a one-car garage, it looks like a three-car garage that might already have an ADU above it because it looks like it's two stories. And can you speak to that? Is there already a structure back there?
Not that I'm aware. Let me double check this, but not that I'm aware.
Is the applicant in the audience, if we know?
It looks like we have Gabriel Calderon in the attendance, so we can go ahead and get them promoted.
Oh, thanks. Thank you, Madam President, because I know these things can sometimes be out of date, but it looks like a fairly new structure. And I was just wondering what, you know, what the intent was here. And also, Fran, while we're waiting for Gabriel, is there not a side setback because the north building line is, it looks like it's right on the lot line? Is there not a setback for a detached ADU?
There should have, but I don't know if it's already built. Then it could be compliant, but I'm still checking on Google Maps to see if it's built because if it was done before two thousand and ten, before the setbacks were set, like then it would still be compliant. They wouldn't have to demolish it. It makes sense.
Okay. Hello, Ms. Calderon. I don't know if you heard the question. Is there already an ADU on there? It looks like it's a two-story, a three-car garage with a second story on the- Is there already an ADU on there? It looks like it's a two story, a three car garage with a second story on the alley.
So, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, so it's not an ADU. It is a newly built garage with a storage loft.
Okay.
And so if I could get the zoning updated, then I can move forward on possibly, you know, looking at changing it into an ADU.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So right now it's just used for story.
Yes.
Great. Okay. And you're keeping that older garage to the south?
So that, that's basically a workshop now. So it's not being used as a garage. It's just storage. It's my large shed. So I removed my old shed and, and, and add the, the, the new structure built. But the old garage is just like I said, it's a workshop now just for storage.
Okay. Now, thank you, Madam President. That's all I had.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Flynn. Seeing no other questions. The public hearing for Council Bill 20-1457 is closed. Comments by members of council? Councilwoman Sandoval?
Thank you, Madam President. So the applicant Gabriel, Mr. Calderon, reached out to my office in, I want to say in the summer of 2020 and found the process a bit confusing. So my council aide Naomi was able to help guide him to get this far. And he lives very close to I-70 and he has a perfect parcel. He lives really close to Centennial Elementary School that has a really high free and reduced lunch. So this type of use of being able to add gentle density into this neighborhood is great. And so as it meets all of the criteria, I absolutely support this. One thing to note is the registered neighborhood organization for this area, it's called Berkeley Regis United Neighbors. I live in the Berkeley neighborhood, not far from the site. They don't take a position on accessory dwelling units. So many have gone through that they're just not, they're choosing, some of my registered neighborhood organizations are just choosing not to take a position. So that's why you won't see a letter from an active registered neighborhood organization in my council district. So with that, I would appreciate my council, my colleagues' support on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sandoval. And seeing no other hands raised, I am happy to support this. All the review criteria has been met and ask others to do so as well. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Sandoval.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Torres.
Aye.
Flack.
Aye.
Seabaka.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Flynn.
Aye.
Herndon.
Aye.
Hines.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Kneech.
Aye.
Ortega.
Aye.
Madam President.
Aye. Madam Secretary, please close the voting and announce the results.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Council Bill 20-1457 has passed. Councilmember Clark, will you please put Council Bill 20-1471 on the floor for passage?
Yes, Council President. I move that Council Bill 1471 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
Second.
All right. It has been moved and I believe Councilman, well, Madam Secretary, I will let you make that call.
That's, that's, Hines got it.
On the second, I was gonna say Hines. I thought so. So Councilman Hines, you got the second. The required public hearing for Council Bill 20-1471 is open. May we please have the staff report? And I believe we've got Libby here.
Yes, I will pull up my screen here. All right. You guys have my screen?
Uh huh. Go ahead, Libby.
Okay. Good evening. I am Libby Kaiser of CPD and we are looking at a rezoning request for 3217 East Yale Way. The property is in Council District Six, represented by Paul Cashman. And it's on the southern edge of the University Park neighborhood. The property is located north of East Yale Way between South Steel and South Addle Streets. It's approximately 9,700 square feet and is occupied by a single unit dwelling. The property is currently in the Urban Edge Single Unit D Zone District and the applicant is proposing to rezone to Urban Edge Single Unit D1 to allow for an accessory dwelling unit. The ESUD1 requires a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet and allows for the urban house and detached accessory dwelling unit building forms. Subject property was previously zoned ESUDX, which allows for the urban house and suburban house building forms. But in June 2019, the property and all other properties in the University Park neighborhood that were zoned ESUDX were legislatively rezoned to ESUD at the behest of neighborhood residents and Councilman Cashman. As they wanted to eliminate the allowance of the suburban house form due to concerns regarding privacy, solar access and incompatible character. And this map shows the extent of that legislative rezoning that was approved in 2019 as outlined in red within the University Park neighborhood boundaries shown in blue. The previous rezoning from ESUDX to ESUD encompassed 183 acres and over 1,000 properties. The yellow star represents the approximate location of the subject property. As far as the existing context, the area's land use is defined by single unit residential and McWilliams Park and Harvard Gulch Greenway. The area's existing building form and scale are characteristic of an urban edge neighborhood context with a blend of urban and suburban features, including single story, single unit homes on orthogonal and curvilinear streets with alley and front loaded garages. The distinction between urban and suburban features is most pronounced at the boundary of East Yale Way. As shown in the upper left photo, the subject property contains a single story house with a parking pad in the front and an alley in the rear of the lot. The homes to the west is also single story and alley loaded. While homes to the east and south lack alley access and have front loaded garages. Attached sidewalks are prevalent throughout the area. The public process kicked off in October of 2020 and since then, application notifications have been provided according to code requirements. As of present, six comments have been received by neighbors and the University Park Community Council supporting the rezoning request stating it will increase the availability of diverse affordable housing, add space for residing and visiting family members, add value to area properties, and help prevent the scrape and redevelopment of this lot. However, four of 10 members of the University Park Community Council oppose the rezoning stating it could set a precedent for short term rentals and segment the long houses. Moving on to the review criteria, it must be found that the requested rezoning is consistent with five criteria. And in this presentation, I'm gonna focus only on those that require some explanation regarding staff's analysis. In regard to criteria one, there are three adopted plans applied to requested rezoning, including the Comprehensive Plan, Blueprint Denver, and the University Park Neighborhood Plan. The rezoning is consistent with all of these plans as stated in the staff report, but I'd like to focus on Blueprint Denver and the neighborhood plan specifically. So the rezoning request is consistent with the future place and street type and growth strategy of Blueprint Denver. But when it comes to the neighborhood context, there's a bit of nuance. As the subject property is mapped within the suburban neighborhood context, immediately south of the urban edge context. In this area, the suburban context cuts through the block and does not follow the curve of East Yale Way, leaving a fragment of the block with a different recommended context than the rest of the block to the north. This also occurs on the two blocks immediately east, where East Yale Way curves south of the alignment of Yale Avenue. As a result, these three block fragments have a different mapped context than most of the University Park neighborhood, which is in the urban edge context. While this is not necessarily a mapping error, the subject property does exhibit characteristics more in line with the urban edge context as it's located in a transitional zone between a rectilinear street grid with alleys and a curvilinear street network without alleys. Lots in the immediate vicinity are of a similar size. As are the, the blocks are generally rectangular and as I mentioned, south of Yale, they're generally more curvilinear. And as we often do, I'd like to just point out that Page 66 of Blueprint Denver states that when a new zone district is proposed for a site, the boundaries of the context may be interpreted with limited flexibility if the request further the goals of Blueprint Denver and is consistent with the overall intent of the neighborhood context map. And in this case, the rezoning is consistent with the map intent and helps further blueprint goals related to ADUs. One of those blueprint goals includes Housing Policy Four, which focuses on diversifying housing choice through the expansion of ADUs throughout all residential areas. An urban edge neighborhood context zone district is also consistent with the University Park Neighborhood Plan of 2008, which defines the subject property within a single family residential neighborhood. And one of the key recommendations for this area says that housing options should be appropriate for a central city location and limited additions should reflect the prevailing pattern of one to two story, single family homes. The rezoning is also consistent with criteria two and three regarding uniformity of district regulations and furthering the public health, safety and welfare. In regard to criteria four, a city adopted plan is the most applicable justifying circumstance for this rezoning. A formal application requesting the rezoning of the previous ESUDX Zone District to the current ESUD District was received in December 2018 and adopted in June 2019 after significant public outreach that overlapped the public processes for the Comprehensive Plan and Blueprint Denver, both of which were adopted in April of 2019. Although these citywide plans were ultimately adopted before approval of the existing zone district, plan goals promoting ADUs, a greater mix of housing options, and infill development near a mix of uses and transit are supportive of the rezoning request to ESUD1. As mentioned previously, a rezoning to ESUD1 is consistent with Blueprint Denver guidance as the subject property is on the boundary of two neighborhood contexts. In this case, the urban edge zone district is more appropriate than a suburban zone district as it maintains the neighborhood's desire to prohibit the suburban house building form. The rezoning would also be consistent with the zone district purpose to promote and protect residential neighborhoods and with the intent as a single unit district, allowing only urban houses and detached ADUs with a minimum zone lot area of 6,000 square feet. Therefore, CPD recommends approval of the rezoning request. And myself and the applicant Brett Houston are available for questions.
All right. Thank you, Libby. Council has not received any written testimony on Council Bill 20-1471. And we have one individual signed up to speak this evening. It's Jesse Paris.
Yes, Jesse Paris.
Good evening, members of council. Can I be heard?
Uh huh. Go ahead Jesse.
My name is Jesse LaChamper. So I'm representing for Denver Homeless Out Loud, Black Starks and Movement for Self Defense, Positive Action Commended for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, Mile High Nails, from allies to alisoness. And I will be the next mayor of Denver in 2023. I'm in favor of this rezoning tonight. As Libby so eloquently stated, it meets all five of the criteria. Consistency with adopted plans, uniformity of district regulations, further public health, safety and welfare, justifying circumstances, consistency with neighborhood context zone district and purpose. So, so it meets all the criteria and I'm in favor of this. I supported ADUs when I ran for city council at large in 2019. And I'll continue to support ADUs. We have a housing crisis in the city, all while we have 26,000 vacant luxury apartments. So any form of housing that people who are unhoused or on the verge of being unhoused could benefit from, I'm in favor of. So thank you. I'm in favor of this rezoning. Good job Cashman. You got this.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Questions from members of council? Councilwoman Sawyer?
Thanks, Madam President. And thanks, Libby. I guess I'm a little bit confused about the consistency with adopted plans because you, you went into a lot of detail about the, the one piece of the, I guess, the crescent on the map and how it is. Can you just explain that to me a little, like a little bit more clearly? Because I understand how it is consistent with the other two adopted plans, but I was a little bit confused about your explanation of how it is consistent with the one adopted plan.
So Blueprint Denver defines the neighborhood context.
Right.
This one is right on the edge of the suburban and the urban edge. And so in those limited instances where it makes sense, we can still establish consistency with some flexibility. And so in this instance, as I mentioned, these properties just north of Yale do exhibit many of the urban characteristics of the, the rest of the blocks that they're on to the north.
Got it. Okay. Perfect. That was, thank you for that clarification. I was just a little bit confused when you went into the explanation of what was happening there, but that is all I needed to know. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no other hands raised. The public hearing for Council Bill 20-1471 is closed. Comments by members of council? Councilman Cashman?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Libby, thanks for the presentation. I do believe this application meets the criteria, but I really appreciate it. You're bringing up the legislative rezoning that we passed a year or so ago because it puts kind of a wrinkle into this situation. You know, what, what the rezoning did, previously, this, the areas allowed both suburban and urban house forms. For the, for the uninformed, the suburban form allows two story construction pretty much from the front to the back of the buildable area of, of the lot. Which ends up with second stories hanging over people's backyards, blocking what is, we've come to recognize as a normal view of, of our neighbors down, down the row and so on. And so we did rezone to eliminate that suburban form. However, now that we're considering ADUs, there is that danger with, while this particular ADU that we're considering tonight, as we saw the home on the front of the property, is a very modest, single story bungalow. But many homes in the rezoned area are very large, scrapes and rebuilds in the four, five, six thousand square foot area. So we're in danger of adding a, a two story ADU in the back of a lot with a, a large urban form home that in effect may create some of the problems that we tried to get rid of with the, by getting rid of the suburban form. So we've begun discussion, a couple of residents and myself with, with CPD, just to look at what type of design review or, or design modifications might make sense for ADUs in, in, in this community that would prevent the unintended consequences of allowing ADUs. I do believe ADUs are a critically important part of, of our housing stock, but I don't intend to allow it to undo. But, uh, I, uh, don't intend to allow it to undo what the neighborhood decided was in its best interests. So with that said, I certainly support this application while recognizing those, uh, on the neighborhood council who have concerns, and we'll do our best to address those moving forward.
Thank you, Councilman Cashman. Up next, we have Councilman Flynn.
Thank you, Madam President. Just because I'm a map geek and because it came up in Libby's presentation.
Oh, God, I can't wait.
I had been studying this, uh, last week when it was on the agenda uh, upcoming and, uh, read the staff report and looked at the curve in Yale that Libby brought up. And just, uh, for everyone's edification, for nothing else, uh, the, uh, the subdivision to the north, Asbury Park, was filed in eighteen eighty-eight, and Yale went straight through. And in fact, the original Yale Avenue from eighteen eighty-eight has become the alley behind the houses on that curve on what is now Yale in the nineteen fifty subdivision to the south, which is called Welcher Hills. And, and, uh, actually, it is because that alley remains that I feel comfortable voting in favor of this. Uh, because otherwise, where there are no alleys, I tend to be a little more, uh, critical of, of ADUs when there is no alley access. Uh, but I just wanted to mention that the subdivision from eighteen eighty-eight, and it wasn't until nineteen fifty that that curve in Yale got put in, uh, by, by the Welcher Hills filing. So thank you, Madam President. I will be voting in favor of it because of that.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Flynn. And great history lesson, uh, as well. Uh, appreciate that. Uh, likewise, um, seeing that all review criteria has been met, I will be voting in favor of this as well. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kenech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
C. Tabaka?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, please close the voting and announce results.
Thirteen ayes?
Thirteen ayes. Council Bill twenty dash fourteen seventy-one has passed. Councilmember Clark, will you please put Council Bill twenty dash fourteen seventy-seven on the floor for passage?
Uh, yes, Council President. I move that Council Bill fourteen seventy-seven be placed upon final consideration and be passed.
Tag it.
It has been moved, and we've got the second by Councilman Herndon. The required public hearing for Council Bill twenty dash fourteen seventy-seven is open. May we have the staff report?
Yes. Sorry, just a minute. Okay, can you see that?
Uh huh. Go ahead.
Okay.
I mean, it's gonna cut it unless we can increase voter turnout.
And I'll be presenting the application for forty-one, forty-four Hooker Street. This application is located in Council District One in Councilwoman Sandoval's district in the Berkeley neighborhood. Uh, more specifically, it's located within the Harkness Heights portion of Berkeley. The applicant, or the property is located on Hooker Street between Forty-first and Forty-second Avenues. It's approximately six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet and is occupied by a single-unit home. The property is currently in the urban, single-unit C-zone district, and the applicant is proposing to rezone to a district that allows for an ADU, USUC One. As stated previously, the existing zone district is urban, urban, single-unit C, which allows the urban house primary building form and typically has a minimum zone lot size of five thousand five hundred square feet. And all the other properties within the Harkness Heights, um, that are residential are also zoned USUC. The current use is single-unit residential. Uh, most of the surrounding area and within Harkness Heights is also single-unit. There are a small number of two-unit and multi-unit in the area, however. This slide shows the existing, um, form and scale. The upper right-hand side is the existing home, and then the left are other single-unit uses on the block. And as you can see, this particular block is all single-unit uses. This map amendment was complete in the beginning of October. A postcard notifying property owners within two hundred feet of the site was sent out on October sixth. To date, we have received six comments. Five are opposed to the proposed rezoning citing concerns with parking, affordability, and infrastructure capacity. And we did receive one comment that was in support of the request. And then additionally, we received a comment from the Berkeley Regis United Neighbors RNO, along with Harkness Heights Neighborhood Association, sent a survey to neighboring property owners, and they received feedback that eight property owners were in support of the request, and then thirteen were, were opposed. The RNOs are unable to release information on why the property owners were either supportive or opposed because they did not, um, do a permission to release comments in the survey. Uh, so they don't quite have that information. But a member of the zoning and planning committee said that there were concerns over the current configuration of the buildings on the site and then the, and then parking. The Denver zoning code has five review criteria, which must be met for approval, and I'll go, go through each one. So the first is consistency with adopted plans. Uh, but which there are two that are applicable to this site. The first is Comprehensive Plan two thousand forty. Um, and so for this one, there are two strategies that are applicable. First, this rezoning will create a greater mix of housing options in the Berkeley, particularly the Harkness Heights area, for all individuals and families. And then second, it'll promote infill development where there's already infrastructure such as water and sewer in place. And in Blueprint Denver, the future neighborhood context is urban. These areas are characterized by one and two-unit residential areas with some mixed use and multi-unit embedded throughout. Block patterns are regular, and there's a high degree of walkability. Blueprint identifies this property as low residential place type. These place types are mostly single and two-unit uses, and accessory dwelling units are appropriate and can be thoughtfully integrated. Um, and the future street type for Hooker is a, an undefined local, which is mostly characterized by residential uses. So their requested zone district to USUC One would be consistent with this low residential, um, guidance and the future street type. The growth area in Blueprint Denver is all other areas of the city. This is where we anticipate to see ten percent of new jobs and twenty percent of new housing by two thousand forty. Uh, again, this is consistent with the rezoning to allow for an ADU because it will allow a limited amount of density that is consistent with, um, the all other areas of the city growth strategy. Blueprint also identifies specific policy recommendations. The land use and built environment housing policy for, um, states that individual rezonings to allow ADUs are appropriate and should be small in area. I mean, that's exactly what this rezoning is. It's just a single property to allow for an ADU. That also finds the requested rezoning meets the next two criteria. The rezoning will result and further the public health, safety, and welfare, primarily through its implementation of adopted plans and by providing a new housing type in a largely single-unit area. Staff finds it a justifying circumstance for this map amendment with the newly adopted guidance for ADUs in, throughout all Denver residential neighborhoods. That's found in Blueprint Denver. And lastly, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the urban neighborhood context, the residential zone district general purpose, and the specific intent of the USUC One Zone District. Therefore, based on the review criteria, staff recommends approval of the rezoning, and that concludes my presentation. And I know the applicants are also on, um, if you'd like to ask them questions, too.
All right. Thank you very much, Libby, for the great presentation. Council has not received any written testimony on Council Bill twenty dash fourteen seventy-seven. We have three individuals signed up to speak this evening. And the first speaker is Christine Rowe, who is the applicant. Go ahead, please, Christine.
I'm connected. Um, good evening. My name is Christine Rowe, and we are requesting to rezone our property at four oh four four Hooker Street to allow us to renovate our existing two-story garage. When we bought our house twenty years ago, one of the things that drew us to it was this two-story brick garage in the back. Although the structure was a hundred years old, it had electrical, outdated water, and a sewer connection. Research at the library shows the first floor garage is original, and the second floor was, um, addition, was built about nine years ago in two, in nineteen twenty-one. We've always wondered about the structure and started looking into what it would take to legally fix it up a few years ago. Our goal is to have an updated structure with an office and a apartment upstairs and a storage garage space downstairs. Our existing house, including a small addition, completed twelve years ago that was permitted through the city, falls and, um, falls under the required building lot coverage allowance. We do not intend to increase the footprint of our existing garage. During the planning board meeting, concerns about parking and traffic in our neighborhood were brought up. I just want to note that our house has a driveway that easily accommodates two vehicles and that our block has an average of about eight to ten vehicles parked on the street during the nights and evenings. Now, currently, there's two houses under construction, so we have seen, oh, or not under construction, but are having additions. And so we are seeing, you know, more, um, construction vehicles parked in front. But typically, I mean, I've been going out at night and just looking, and, you know, we average eight to ten cars out there every evening. Um, we reached out to Development Services in early January and understand that if approved for an ADU, our next step, step would be to follow up with the city regarding all the design and code requirements for this existing structure. Again, we are requesting to rezone our property to allow an additional dwelling unit. Um, thanks for your time, and please ask any questions.
All right. Thank you, Christine. Our next speaker is Jesse Paris.
Good evening, members of council, those watching at home. My name is Jesse LaChamper. So I'm represented for Denver Homeless Out Loud, Black Starks, and Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Committee for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado and Mile High News, along with From Allies to Abolitionist. And I will be the next mayor of Denver in twenty twenty-three. I'm in favor, again, so eloquently stated. It meets all the five of the criteria.
Let's see, Jesse, your Wi-Fi connection.
Just to see what adopted plans.
We might need you to turn your video off. We're not able to hear your audio, unfortunately, Jesse. We might have to have you turn your video off so that we can get a better Wi-Fi connection with your audio.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Uh huh. Yeah. We can hear you better now. Oh, okay. It looks like we might have lost, um, Jesse, but we'll try to get him back in the queue. Or Jesse, if you want to go ahead and unmute, we'll try to get the rest of your testimony in. Okay, go ahead.
So I was just saying it meets all five of the criteria. I was just listing out the criteria. Uh, I think I left off on, uh, Criteria Three, which is, uh, further public health and safety and welfare, uh, justifying circumstances, consistency with neighborhood context, residential zone, district, purpose, and intent. So seeing that this meets all five of the criteria, I'm going to be in favor of this rezoning tonight. Good job, Amanda Sandoval. I just wanted to know how many of these, uh, rezonings have been passed within the last year in District One? If you can answer that question, I'll greatly appreciate it. Thank you, and I'll have a good night.
All right. Thank you, Jesse. Our last speaker is Tess Doherty.
Look at her!
Hi there. Um, okay. Um, hi, I just, uh, wanted to um, ask some questions about access to these public comments. Um, and, um, I know that, um, you know, the signups, the window's pretty short and.
Tess, we, we would ask that you speak directly to the bill that we're hearing, um, tonight. It's forty-one, forty-four Hooker Street. It's a ADU.
Okay. Um, so if I, um, if I had, um, wanted to sign up for, to comment on the ADU, um, um, regarding this rezoning, I'm just wondering how I would have done that if I had a disability. Um, I'm a specialized teacher, and so I was just wondering how someone with a hearing or vision impairment would be able to have seen the, um, city planner's PowerPoint because, um, people that use, um, visual overlays for seeing screens can't see shared screens. So access to, um, the city planner's presentation would have been, um, impossible. So I'm just curious about access to some of these. Um, and if I needed additional accommodations under the ADA, how I would have been able to get them in such a short amount of time given that, um, the signup was so short and connecting to services would likely take much longer than the ten minutes or so that we have to sign up. So I just have some questions about access under the ADA. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Questions from members of council? All right. Seeing no questions from members of council. The public hearing for Council Bill twenty dash fourteen seventy-seven is closed. Comments by members of council? Councilwoman Sandoval?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so Harkness Heights is a very unique area in northwest Denver, and it's gone under a little bit of a different planning process. You, um, in a few weeks, you all will see me bring a conservation overlay for this area that we have been working on for about, um, it predates me, so it's back to Espinoza's time, so probably for about five years. So that's why there was more, um, outreach to this, um, particular accessory dwelling unit than the last ADU that you saw, which they're both in the statistical neighborhood of Berkeley. But Harkness Heights is its own RNO within an RNO. And so due to that fact, they have had some more, um, robust outreach. Actually, that, um, conservation overlay for three hundred doors goes to planning boards is coming Wednesday. So, um, I'm familiar with this site, and I know that ADUs, as we all know, are somewhat controversial in some parts of the neighborhood. And Harkness Heights has worked really hard on this overlay, and we did not create standards for an overlay within this, the, um, um, we did not create standards for the ADUs and the overlay. So there are some conversations moving forward that we, I'm gonna probably have to go back on. But given that we are voting on this criteria, I just wanted you all to have the backstory of why there was a little bit more, um, robust outreach on this application prior to the one that we heard at the beginning of the night. Um, I do believe it meets the standards, um, all five of them. And I do think that they are going to do a good job of doing adaptive reuse and, um, adding any type of gentle density into our neighborhood is always a good thing. Um, so to answer your question, Jesse, I don't know the exact number of accessory dwelling units that were voted on in two thousand twenty. Um, I led an application for, um, Chaffee Park. So I can get that. If you want to email my office, um, I can have some research done from my staff, Naomi. I have no problem helping you find out that information. I just don't know it off the top of my head. But I just wanted to answer that question for everybody. And with that, I would ask my colleagues to support, um, give, offer your support on this application this evening. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Sandoval, and happy to support this one as well because it meets the review criteria. And seeing no other comments by members of council. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Black?
Aye.
C. Tabaka?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kenech?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, please close the voting and announce results.
Thirteen ayes?
Thirteen ayes. Council Bill twenty dash fourteen seventy-seven has passed.
And there are pairs that were showing up to ask questions. Well done, Tess.
Well done, Tess. Council will hold a required public hearing on Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero one five, changing the zoning classification for fifteen seventy, fifteen eighty, fifteen eighty-six, and fifteen ninety-six. West Bayard. West Bayard Avenue in Belverde, and a required public hearing on Council Bill 21-0017, changing the zoning classifications for 1501 South Akoma Street in Overland. Any protests against Council Bills 21-0015 or 21-0017 must be filed with the council offices no later than noon on Monday, February 22nd. There being no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned. Secretary, have a nice night, everybody.
Since there's no further business, I mean, it's not like there are unhoused people with frostbite dying outside the building you won't go to. But I'm really glad you answered those amazingly important questions about zoning. No, why would he chime in? This is why we gotta push him. If you are his constituent, push him to be there on Wednesday morning. Why does this matter? Because the inability to sit down, granted, I know that might not resonate too much with him, but people with disabilities, people who are in pain, need to sit down. It's a thing. And I have criminalized sitting down in the RTD. Yeah, I know he campaigned on accessibility. I know this. He ain't opened his mouth about it but once, one time, since I've been paying attention. One time. Nope. It can always be tied into the zoning, and you were brilliant. My mom was a special ed teacher, so this has, in rural Tennessee, no less. So, anything having to do with accessibility is a particularly, um, red button topic for me. And I'm glad to not being the, to be the person bringing it up. Thank you for doing so. It matters. I can't. Hmm, I can't. Thank you for being here. Just your presence is enough to make them nervous. Really? I'm from difficult. I know. Yeah, that's really the name. Um, it's unincorporated. It's outside of Carthage, which is, I think, legally defined as a hamlet. Anyway, Smith County. So, about six hours east, but yeah, that's awesome. Anyway, you guys are amazing. Just by showing up, you're making a difference. Now, find other ways to engage with us throughout the week. Hopefully, we'll see you on Wednesday morning. If you can't make the RTD meeting tomorrow night, tell them what pieces of garbage they actually are. Yeah, yeah. Mom, my mom is something. I'll tell you that. I mean, she produced this. Have a good night, everyone, and I'll see you Wednesday.